Next slide, one just needs a question. The question is, if you can back it up. Come and follow me before you as hopefully as we possibly can. Asking for your forgiveness, but thanking you for your grace, your mercy, and your favor, oh Lord. Knowing that you are sovereign, you are sustaining, and you are sufficient. We come before you asking you that you will let the words of our of our mouth and meditation of our hearts be acceptable in this fact. You are our power, strength, and our review. We ask for Lord to continue to bless the city of Harvey, that you will bless its residents, all having those who are coming here and going out. But you will bless this council, oh Lord. As we continue to do the thing that we are supposed to, which is your work, which is to glorify you, to magnify you, oh Lord, and to give you all the praise. For you are the only other we need, you are God, you are God alone, and we need you no less. This we ask you to say, amen.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next slide, the agenda is approved, May, uh, the December of two thousand twenty-three, Chair would say motion to approve.
I make the motion.
Motion, uh, five, four, second, minus six, um, favor of six, five, and eight, nine.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion is carried. Next one, the agenda is go ahead, uh, January two thousand twenty-four, from my understanding, the ordinance people not able to have a, uh, a meeting today, fine script.
Uh, let's go ahead there, uh, if he told him about six would be out of town, uh, he kind of slipped his mind that we have a meeting today. So we decided to postpone the bills because they pay the bills at our next meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna take a listen now until, um, uh, our next meeting. Number six, four, this is a resolution of the city of Harvey, six, eight, and this is the sun. Six, B, one, resolution refining and execution of ordinance three, forty-one, levying of taxes in the city of Harvey. Hooking in the loyalty of fiscal year beginning May one, two thousand twenty-three, ending April thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Chair would say a motion to approve, so.
Second.
Motion by the sixth, second by the first. Final purpose, please call it off.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Drinsky?
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Alderman Randall? Motion carried, that's resolution three zero six seven.
Next slide, B two, six B two, an ordinance authorized on the sale of surplus personal property owned by the city of Harvey. Um, well, one thing that I would like to see happen, um, with this particular ordinance is that we also list the surplus property on our website. So that the residents or owners from the property will be able to have access to it and, um, able to possibly purchase those, um, those items, if it's okay with the board. There is no objection. That's what we're gonna have as a product of policy, oh Lord. Hearing none, Chair would say a motion to approve. Second, motion by the third, second by the sixth.
Sixth.
Final purpose, call it off.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Randall? Alderwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Drinsky?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Motion carried, and that is ordinance three, four, eight, three.
Thank you very much. Next slide, one agenda is public comment, person to public comment. Um, most people may donate, if there were time for another speaker comment, shall be courteous and respectful at all times. But persons may use public comment for the purpose of campaign or advertising. This is not a question and answer time. This is not a question and answer time. And the council cannot convene a conversation on public. Persons that are concerned by operations should be addressed to these staff during the clever visit. I would please render for comments to bring space. First on the, um, public comment is Neil Bill, Inc.
Very saddened by recent news around my house at, uh, Hall Street. I, uh, saw it at the back and I just could not believe it. Let's say this, the city needs to come together, we need to organize properly. We need to have it such a way that the citizens are involved and dedicated to it. And I'm not knocking the city, but I'm saying we need to step up to do that. People should know what's going on, people should know where seniors are living in buildings, people should know where seniors are being placed, people should know what exactly happened. And we don't know that, and I live right around the corner. We have brown buildings out there, we have a, uh, a place where it used to be a car wash with all kinds of gang signs on it. We have another building, I thank the city for tearing the building and stopping the prostitutes that be drunk and being there, being there. But the one problem in that building is this, they tore the steps down in the front of the back and let the trash sit down there. We've got to do better. And I say this, God bless those people who are in there, are still in questioning the way does it happen, I'm questioning whether or not this really happened, or was it settled. But I do say this, it cannot happen in our city anymore if it did. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next question, Ryan Simalski.
Okay, do you hear me? Uh, good evening, everyone, uh, my name is Ryan Simalski, I am the director of the Harvey Historical Society, so I'm here, um, to address everyone on behalf of our organization. Obviously, as many of you have seen, it's even in the national media now, the, um, the incident at the apartments on Halsted here in North Harvey. Um, our, our hearts go out to these residents who obviously have not been treated correctly, or I would say legally. Um, as someone who works in real estate, it seems like there's a lot of, um, shady stuff going on here, uh, yes, on the part of the owners, but also on the part of the city. Um, I did read the city response, uh, saying, you know, well, we didn't know, et cetera, et cetera, but we have witnesses saying that they saw, uh, police officers, Harvey police officers standing by as these folks were, um, were, you know, enclosed. People were boarding up the apartments, um, and also, we, um, I was there myself and saw the notices dated January fifth that were very official, Harvey notices, you know, something about, uh, I don't know, condemning the building, whatever, so, I mean, it's hard to believe that the city didn't know this was going on. I do have to say, though, for the reporters that are here, which we hear every city council meeting, this is just the tip of the iceberg of the corruption that goes on in the city of Harvey, Illinois. And it's not just Mayor Clark, I supported Mayor Clark, when I moved here in two thousand sixteen, he was an alderman that, um, said, I, I oppose the corruption of Mayor Calog, and I'm gonna change things. And unfortunately, what we're finding is things have stayed the same. I wish that were not true, but it, it is what it is, and it's not just the mayor, unfortunately, it takes aldermen to vote, they have six votes. So, uh, we also have aldermen that are going along with these, this corrupt agenda, we have residents that, um, are being told they need to leave their homes on Myrtle Avenue, uh, for retention plan that does not need to go there, we have this incident that happened, you know, involving, um, more real estate. Um, we know that the city of Harvey owns over, let's say, four hundred and fifty parcels, that it refuses to sell, or even acknowledged that it has. What the hell is going on, and where's the money going, that's what I want to know. Where is the money going, the mayor likes to say the city is poor, the city actually takes in a lot of money. Where is it going, we don't get FOIA requests answered, and aldermen, you're just as guilty, the only two that ever questioned are Tracy and Colby. No one else even bothers to question the mayor, they vote yes on every ordinance. So, I mean, I don't know, what else can we say, for those of us here in Harvey that we always call for reform, this is the same stuff we say all the time. And you know what, I'll tell you, I'm not gonna name the news outlet, but I call the news desk talking about the, um, release of toxic material in the illegal demolitions going on across the street, and I called earlier this week and I said about it, you know what the guy at the news desk said? Oh, but it's just Harvey. Is that how you really feel about us media, is that how you feel about us authorities, the county, the sheriff, uh, the FDI? Because you know what, that's not good enough. We're people and we pay taxes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, now I'm done.
Twenty-one, um, here, just to be going to different issues. Uh, the first one is, uh, the treasurer's report, which is non-existent in the city of Harvey. Uh, what city functions like that? All we ask is that once a month, the treasurer gives the information that we need so we can know where we stand financially. But her hands are being tied by her bosses and her boss's boss. They're not giving her the information that she needs, and they're just leaving her hanging out there. This can't go on, I'm glad that all the television stations are here, so everybody can know what's going on, it's not funny, it's not a joke. You're not getting the treasure, you're getting your own cell, you're getting everybody that lives in the city of Harvey. So whether we have money or not, just tell the truth, okay, everybody knows that we're struggling out here. Second thing, it's the issue over there on one hundred forty-fourth and Halsted. You know, it's gotta be some kind of procedure to put in place, especially, uh, when we're talking about seniors and people that are handicapped, when you're getting ready to shut down, you have to move. There was no sign posted out as being condemned that everybody's gonna have to move. I talked to Ms. Bruce, she said that nobody came to her and offered her an alternative on where to go, where to move, and a couple of other people, that's not the way that you handle business. I understand that there's, there's violations that, that need to be addressed there, but it needs to be happened, handled in the proper way. So I ask of everybody who has any power that's sitting up here today in the city of Harvey, do your job, okay? Then I wouldn't have to come up here and blow you out, okay? Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone, happy new year.
Good evening.
Last Wednesday, January third, for the special city council meeting, line item B one was very vague. There was no clear explanation when it comes to the words defined, prohibited, unscheduled bus stops. Was the city talking about pace for school bus stops? According to PAC office opinion twenty-three dash zero zero four, the city has violated section two point zero two C of the OMA. The council took a final action to approve bus stops without informing the public with the real subject matter of a vote on the posted agenda. Therefore, line B one must be brought back and placed on the next city council meeting agenda with the real subject matter, so that the public can be informed. Also, when reading last Wednesday's special meeting agenda, was the council voting on a resolution or an ordinance? Because again, that wasn't clear, thank you.
Thank you, um, and then the public comment, now we're going to settle with five discussion. Um, before we go into discussion, uh, I would like for the audience to agree to a time to limit discussion. So amongst yourselves, um, I would recommend two minutes per alderman, but we can go as far as three, depending on what the, uh, pleasure of the alderman. You know, what have a suggestion?
Did you hear that?
Or who's going to speak? What was that, okay. Well then, we'll limit, we'll limit it to two minutes per alderman, so no one spoke. Um, before we do so, though, I'd like to, uh, introduce a, a good friend of the city. Uh, he is the, um, a, a, a man of many talents, but we, we know him as a friend of our, uh, board president, um, Tony Preckwinkle, who, who are the president of Cook County Board of Trustees, uh, his name is Al Kindle, please receive him, he has an address that he'd like to make.
Good evening, everyone. I, um, thank you, my notes will be short. We are, I'm pleased to announce that, um, I'm Al Kindle, Special Assistant for Cook County Board President Tony Preckwinkle, and I grew up here in Harvey, and I grew up here in Markham. As you know, um, there was a recent weather event, it was flooding in the area. The president, Preckwinkle, was able to sign an emergency order, we had the president to sign, and as of this date, we're able to, to award over thirty million dollars out to residents in, uh, Cook County on disaster relief. There still is time available, I believe, up until the nineteenth. So those who may not have been able to take advantage of this resource, I'm encouraging you to do so. You can see me right after this, if you, uh, need to talk to me direct. The phone number is eight hundred six two one three three six two. Eight hundred six two one thirty-three sixty-two. And again, we've given out over thirty million dollars, there's still more money there, and there's assistance for small businesses as well, that may go beyond that timeline. I want to thank you for that brief moment, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, thank you, we appreciate you, and we appreciate the support from, uh, Cook County, and especially our, uh, board president, Tony Preckwinkle. So, um, who's far? Chair recognizes the fourth ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to begin by starting by saying that, um, ultimately, my job is to stand up for the people. First of all, I am shocked and embarrassed when this incident happened.
I'll give it to you personally.
I feel that it was handled in the right professional way.
Pick up your microphone.
My job.
Take your microphone.
My job as an alderman is to accept accountability. Even though I didn't make the call, I didn't make the decisions, even though I wasn't aware, I'm still an alderman, and that makes me just as responsible too, so I deeply apologize. Beginning with that, I just have a couple of questions, I can either say all the questions, or we can answer them one at a time. But my concern is what appropriate procedures follow for this board and eviction. Okay, an example of that is another thing, um, a non-occupancy sign was placed on the apartment buildings on January fifth. And that same day, on January fifth, they came in on the days and started boarding up the houses, the, um, apartment buildings on January fifth. Normally, when there's a non-occupancy sign placed, it's at least forty-eight or seventy-two hours, it should be given before they do anything. But I'm really confused, um, you posted it on January fifth, then came late on that night. Also, were there county sheriffs present for the eviction? To my understanding, Cook County sheriffs, I don't even want to convict somebody from their house.
Right.
Okay, um, where was the city reporters when this went viral all over the world? Where were the city representatives? Okay, um, this is very, once again, I just apologize, I accept accountability. Um, I like my position, I, I love being in this position, even though today is hard, but it's part of the job.
Oh, your time is up.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I think I got my point, girl.
Thank you. Chair recognizes the second ward.
I'm absolutely flattered, yes, that I'd like to ask the attorney, Article three, building in construction, uh, two twenty-eight, three fifty, in its state, and for the record, because to what fourth ward alderman mentioned regarding the process. This non-transcender moment that has went viral across the world, thank God that it did, because he's the ruler of a seventy-three-year-old gentleman, was left boarded up in his building. As fourth ward alderman stated, there was a non-occupancy order on the facility. And so, based on the context clues at hand, one could assume that the city of Harvey at large had some peace in it because of the non-occupancy sticker that was placed on the door.
Right.
We don't, we aren't aware as to who specifically was there, so I can't point that, but that's based on what the residents have said. And in going back to Article three, building in instruct, in construction, two twenty-eight, three fifty, eviction rights of the occupants, no action for eviction, abatement of a nuisance, forcible entry, and detainer, or other similar proceeding, including but not limited to increase of rent, decrease of services, and refusal to renew a lease, shall be threatened or instituted against an occupant of a dwelling solely because such occupant agrees to testify or testify at a code violation hearing, that I'm unaware that he had. Or has complained of a code violation to the landlord, to a government agency, public official, or elected representative, or to a community organization, or news media. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit any rights or defenses available to tenants or other occupants, other, under other city ordinances or applicable law. So attorney, my question to you is, did we violate two twenty-eight, three fifty? And if we did, what is our correct action, or what exactly are the specific steps or protocol that we're supposed to take, when we would like to kick someone from your property?
And we will answer that question as we get to the end of the, uh.
Thank you.
Now, chair recognizes the alderman from the third ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to know what we can get all of this energy, and be involved when we have to identify the businesses that owe the city millions of dollars. I wish you could put all this information with that, millions of dollars that the businesses owe us, millions of dollars, things that we cannot do with our city. We complain about the board of house, we complain about having to pay our workers to progress through this kind of time. We complain about a lot of things that take money, we are always comparing ourselves with block one and four, and oh, four, which does money, that's the apples and oranges. We don't have the money that they have. We do not have that money that they have, if we had that type of money there, we could probably do the same things, we could probably have the things that block four has, we could probably have the things that block five has. We probably have the things that.
We have the money, where's it going? We want to know where it's going, you haven't told us.
Don't do that, don't do that, don't do that.
Just say it.
It's always accused that the city has stolen property. And out of its block, we have a real estate guru. I had a listing, I listed three hundred and something properties in my board, I brought them to my board meetings and showed everybody who all owns those properties. And out of those, only two of them belong to the city, only two of them. Thank God I didn't give one of them over some of the money that Robin Hill gave them. That was just wrong, and I have to be speaking, I should have brought my life back, I'm not gonna be breaking, I'm gonna be living this whole. And I'm not even real estate agent, okay? That's all I have to say, let's focus that energy on what people own us. So that we can bring our city together, and let's stop fighting, we need to stop fighting. Some of the things, we do need to fight about, and when we place the blame on things, we need to have a seat.
Chair recognizes the alderman from the sixth ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by saying that, as alderman of the sixth ward, this building that was uninhabitable on one hundred and forty-fourth and Halsted, was deemed uninhabitable by professional certified co-enforcement officers. Not the police department, not the fire department. Now, for example, hear me good, and I didn't interrupt you, and don't interrupt me. Now, hold on, man, hold on, man, hold on, man.
I want us to keep it, I want us to keep it silent, okay? I would appreciate, we, we, we hold your time, alderman.
Okay.
I would appreciate, we would appreciate if you would refrain. When everyone got to be doing their public comment, it was nice, it was easy, and we listened, please do the same, thank you, continue, alderman.
Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, I received a text message to get over here on one hundred forty-fourth and Halsted, because this is in my board. I got over there and I found news media, and I found deplorable living conditions. Some of the people that's over there in that building have been very much uncomfortable to me, okay? Say for example, your mama, your grandmama, your auntie, your uncle live on the third floor, and that loose cat was dead, and they killed. And the first thing is that, God, you didn't do nothing, so we damned if we do, or we damned if we don't. I think that Harvey acted responsible in this particular situation. In, in this climate, in this climate, nobody wants to see anybody get put out, but that they would issue letters months ago. And they, they were responsible, the LLC property managers were responsible for our letting the tenants know, it should have been in the lease. If for any reason this building is hell uninhabitable, then I want it in my lease, then you gonna give me in a hotel or put me another place today. Now, the city of Harvey is a goodwill municipality, we would not board up anybody inside an apartment. Now, earlier today, I saw a video that showed a man boarding up inside the apartment.
Alderman?
Yes, Mayor.
I was upset.
Aye.
Let's get everybody, uh, Chair recognizes the alderwoman in the first ward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There is not a person that is not compassionate to the people that were boarded up. There is not a person that can say that was right without, without any reason. But the bottom line is, I'm not looking to place blame, but the city of Harvey did not do the boarding up. Now, there were some individuals speaking that the Harvey police were, were present. The Harvey police was not present, to my knowledge, there is no record of any police officer present during the boarding up. With that being said, it should have never happened, and I hope, and I hope that there is some resolution to this from the housing authority, if those houses are sectioned, which I am told they are, and they are in horrible conditions, no one has a right to live like that, no one should live like that, and we can all agree. So I'm very grateful for the people that are passionate and, and, and standing up for individuals. This is the Harvey we know, when we see something wrong, we say something, we do something. Again, there is not a person here that cannot side with that individual being boarded up. Nobody wants to see anyone hurt, no one wants to see their loved ones. But going on and saying a speculation, uh, some subject of, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Accusations of that going on mishap from the city, I am the longest-serving alderman, second is Alderman Keys, and I have yet, and I do not have a blind eye. I have been very proactive, and many of you know me, so with that, thank you, thank you for coming out, thank you for.
Thank you, alderman. And you, and you're welcome, and you're welcome. Okay, what I'm gonna try to do is want to add a few questions, um, one was, how, excuse me, um, uh, I'll start with the alderman. The city of Harvey has a responsibility to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of this city. And when there are people in such circumstances or conditions, and the people are on one hundred forty-fourth and Halsted, uh, it is our duty to, to take action. One of the things that we noticed was that over the past years prior to this administration, it appears that none of those inspections that should have been done were done. Because many of the, much of the deterioration that has taken place did not happen over the past four years. Those stairs, those balconies, the roof, and all the rest of the things, the deterioration of brick, that did not, and the deterioration of metal, that did not happen over the past four years. That was a thing that things, that should have happened quite some time ago during the previous administration. So, we have. So we had a procedure, and we have a procedure in which we go about inspecting the buildings to find out um if there are deficiencies. But how did we even come to that point? Well, we came to that point because several residents complained about that building. Some residents from the six or six ward complained about that building. Residents would come to meet the mayor on Fridays from noon to three, and they would complain about that building. And of course, we've had a few uh residents get up during public comment and complain about that building. Additionally, from my understanding, it's been over three hundred, I think it's three hundred and twenty seven is that, you know, calls for service to that building within the past year. So there's something going on with that building, but the one thing that wasn't going on at that building was maintenance. And the other thing that wasn't going on was inspections. And because they were allowed to get away with it for so long, now these people are in the condition that they're in. But that's no reason to blame the hardworking employees of the City of Harvey for doing their jobs. They did their jobs. They went and they performed an inspection. They saw that there were deficiencies. Yeah, that's a little woo woo. They went and they they found deficiencies. And upon finding deficiencies, they notified the owners. Now, as many of you in the audience are homeowners, you own property. The City of Harvey has no right to go into your property and do just whatever it is that they wanted to. There's a thing called the Fourth Amendment that prevents us from being able to do that. So why would we be able to do that in this apartment situation? I understand that 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 emotions have been high. That's understandable. But we also have to let cool heads prevail. When you watch the video from TikTok, you don't see anyone from the City of Harvey on that video. Not a police officer, not a staff member, not a third party um vendor or contractor is on that video. It even says, if you watch the video closely, when the video starts, it says Harvey Illinois Police is boarding up apartments while people are still inside of them. That's what it says. But when you go to the end of the video, it says something differently. It says, this video was filmed January fifth around seven o'clock P M. There are no known police on site and multiple unknown third party workers boarding up units with tenants inside. So while the the author of the video says one thing in the beginning, they say something totally different at the end. But the only thing that the City of Harvey was trying to do was follow those procedures. And if if someone would have gotten hurt, if someone would have fell thirty to forty feet to their death, then we'd be having another conversation. And of course, we wouldn't like the conversations that we had. But I want to, as a mayor, because they followed the procedure. And I want to give a great thanks to the City of Harvey, to our team, for trying to protect those people. Because that's what we were trying to do. Trying to protect those people from having the quality of life that many of you, and many of us, take for granted. And they don't deserve to live that way. So we stepped up and decided to do something about it. And as a result, the City of Harvey is getting vilified for it when we was nowhere around. We were nowhere around in the first place. There's nothing in the audience that says that you're out there seventy two hours for uh delivering a non occupancy, from my knowledge. So I don't know where that came from, but it's not fair. We followed the procedures. We did what we were supposed to do. And then the management company and the owners took it. They boarded up the place. They and 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 whomever it said, actually a lot of people. You know, we don't always agree on everything, but I think that we can agree on this one. That should have never happened. Now, as the lead legislator, and as the CEO of the city, we're going to start making some changes in the ordinances that we have to make sure that those types of things, or at least to help ensure that those types of things don't happen again. But when I bring the ordinance before you, Tracy Key, Coach Abbott, I wish you would read it. And then after you read it, I wish you would.
They read it. They read it.
You had your time.
Yeah.
I wish you would support. Okay? So at the end of the day, at the end of the day,
Ridiculous.
That's what we're gonna do. And after answering that question.
Absolutely ridiculous.
There. If you answer number, you know, out of order, when you open the out of, you are out of order, the chairman requests you to stop. You are out of, you are the one that's going up. I don't appreciate, I don't appreciate being singled out. You're not a tongue dealer. You're standing up for the city. Why not?
Right.
You know, you know how to say it.
Right. She's right. She is right. She is right. Come on. Come on. Come on. Come on. Let her speak. Let her speak.
How they see.
Absolutely out of the corner.
How they see. Just how they see. And for, out of order, out of order, we have not heard the team, the team uh, ten more as well.
Let her speak. Let her speak. Let her speak. Come on. She wants to peacefully speak.
And they can keep watching. And they can keep watching.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, City of Harvey.
Thank you, City of Harvey.
Keep talking.
And you just walk around. You get too low.
Come on. Let her speak. Let her speak. Let her speak.
So you got to call it at uh nine five seven.
Let her speak.
Next item.
This is what happens. This is how things go.
Next item.
That's my alderman. Let her speak.
Please, would you please explain Article three, the um, that section that the question was asked.
Horrible.
Yes.
Where's democracy? Where's democracy, guys? Come on.
Thank you, Mary.
That's my alderman.
To the alderman, alderman was referring to section two twenty eight, three fifty of the city code that prohibits retaliation against persons that are testifying at a code enforcement hearing. Um, I I don't see how that was relevant to this discussion.
Thank you.
What the uh, that no person was threatened in response for testifying. Thank you.
Free speech.
Right. Mm-hmm.
The rights here.
Right.
I'm not that first. I'm just talking very loud.
Wait, wait.
I'm following my options.
Yo.
Peace.
I was thinking of saying something different. But I was saying something else. Watch the devils. See, soon as I get started, the devils start running up out of the room, don't I? Soon as I get started. For some odd reason, I get ready to talk and I get ready to talk about God and they they start to, they start to leave. You know? The one thing that I am, and that I know for sure that I am, is that I am an imperfect man. And I've said it over and over again. I don't try to be perfect. I try to believe in the God who perfects my imperfections. And I've always said it over and over again. I went at a few people in the audience that I've never promised to perfection. I've only promised to progress. That was it. But we have to to take into consideration what's going on in our city. But in order for us to understand where we where we are now, we have to understand where we came from. You know, this city was going through some tremendous changes between two thousand three and two thousand nineteen. And it seemed like nobody had anything to say. When officers were getting arrested, nobody had anything to say. When staff members were getting arrested and indicted, it seemed like nobody had anything to say. Hold on, Cheryl. When we had six people in March of two nineteen, twenty nineteen, get arrested on corruption issues, on corruption charges, conspiracies, and things like that, of which five were uh, all of them were indicted, and five were actually convicted. Nobody had anything to say. When the previous administration ran this city into the ground, people were so quiet. I don't know, maybe they were scared of it. Was that it? People were so quiet and they had absolutely nothing to say. But there were a few people that were saying something. I was saying something. Shirley Kerlinsky was saying something. Alderman Joseph Whittaker was saying something. And even temporarily, Alderman Lamont, Lamont Brown was saying something. But people were quiet. There was no transparency. There was absolutely nothing. We were using a building that we didn't even own, that was owned by somebody else that the city gangstered from somebody. This is what was going on. The 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 city, excuse me, the Chicago Tribune newspaper called the Harvey a lowest town. Nobody had anything to say. You know, it reminds me of the Israelites who did not eat you. Because even though they crossed the Red Sea, even though they got men from heaven, even though they got water from a stone, they were still asking, why can't we go back to what we were before? We were better off in Egypt, making bricks with no straw. We were better off in Egypt, seeing how love was tortured and beaten and maimed. We were better off in the condition that we were. And that's what I see now. Some of y'all want to go back to Egypt. You want to go back to where it was. You like it when a hundred and sixty four million dollars was spent and there was no caribella and no sin. You like it when uh twenty million dollars was spent on a hotel that none of us can stay in because the hotel wasn't built. And you're saying nothing. You're saying, I'm the guy. It makes me think that some people, maybe not you, but it makes me think that some other people must have been taking advantage of this and received the sum of the benefits because people were saying absolutely nothing. But here we come, trying to follow the law. Pastor Thomas right there owns the community center. The community center that the City of Harvey has been using for years and years and years, that gangstered that property from that man, gangstered. And nobody said anything. I got in, found out we didn't own it, shut it down. And the first thing happens, you start vilifying me and saying, I'm the problem. Versus the person who gangstered it from has the courage. Come on, now, we can do better. And then we get into this situation here with this building. And people want to think the worst of us. They don't think the worst of us were folks that they killed when there's thirty two homicides in the city. They don't pay attention when we bring the homicides down fifty five percent and they bring it down another fourteen percent. They don't pay attention to that. What they do is they always go talk about the city and talk about the city in a bad light. And unfortunately, we have people on our council who help to promote that and perpetuate that. We have people in our city that get on social media because they feel like it's an opportunity for them to get attention. And they help to perpetuate that. Why would you perpetuate that against your own city? Why would you perpetuate that against the place in which you live? Because we're all in the same boat. If there's a hole in the boat, all of us catch water. Every single one of us. Now, the City of Harvey was not there. And the City of Harvey was not boarding up people in their cars. Play it simple. It's unfortunate that we have to sit up here and address an issue for something that we did not do. Because we're already addressing enough issues for things that have been previously done. But I think it's sad. But even though I think it's sad, I still have hope. And I have hope because no matter what happens, see, no matter how imperfect I am, no matter how imperfect you are, no matter how imperfect this city is, God keeps blessing us. Because he said, and y'all know it, because I started off my term this way. My people, who I call by my name, humble themselves. Humble themselves, okay? Seek my face. Pray and stop their wicked ways, and I will heal heal them from all harm. I will forgive them of their sins, and I will heal their lame. And I know people don't want to hear about it. Yes, I talked about the devils running, because I know for those of you who have been to church wherever, there were times in the past it was preaching, and people didn't want to hear what he was saying. All of a sudden, things start going up. But the same thing here. People want to separate you from your God. They want us, and I'm and I'm just as guilty too. So it's not just, it's not just everybody else's speech. They want us to be ignorant. They want us to separate from him and they want us to forgive who brought us this far. But we have come this far by one thing. Faith. Faith. And we are going to continue to do something. So let me be the first to ask those forgiveness. Let me be the first to say that if there is something that I have done to harm my brother, and hopefully at some point in time we can recognize, and hopefully some point in time they will figure it out. But we need to love each other more. I say this all the time, not because the cameras are here, because you've heard it. We need to love each other more. We need to support each other more. We are all Harvey. We go up together or we go down together. I'm in this seat for the next three and a half years, y'all, so get used to it. And the people elected me to do so, and they elected these six people to do so as well. They trust them. I trust them. But most of all, I trust the God. So I'm gonna open the doors of the church because I have to. Because that's what this is all about. And I've said, if you don't know him, get to know him. If you know him, get a relationship with him. Everything that's happening right now in this city is happening in the Bible. Read Isaiah one. I just told somebody earlier. Read Isaiah one and see if you don't see Harvey in there. Read Psalm ninety one and see if you don't see Harvey in there. Keep digging deep. Keep praying. And if we pray together and we have faith. Keep digging deeper, keep praying, and if we pray together and we have faith together, there's absolutely nothing that this city can do. So thank you very much. Next, the chair entertaining motion Twitter.
Second.
Motion by the, six, second, by the third, all the favor signified by the senior. Those are the calls, here you learn, motion's added, seven, eight, six, again.
Oh, I should, give me one second, I'll be right back, I just want to get this.